Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Cadet Chief Petty Officer Mendoza, and I am here on behalf of the Melpitas High School NJRTC program. Accompanying me this evening are Cadets Senior Chief Plowell, Petty Officer Verdi, and Zubi, and Cadets Susie, Mendoza J, and Lou. At this moment, I would like everyone to please rise and face the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated.
For heart, hearts, hope, heart, hearts, huh, 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 fight, 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 huh, huh.
Nope, alright. Item six, discussion items to Superintendent's District Address.
Thank you, President Lou. And thank you to our community, our team members, for being here today in person, and to those of you online for our special board meeting on the state and the district. This is an important meeting as we are going to review what we've accomplished, our challenges, our budget, and also facts about our community. And so I thank y'all for taking time to be here this afternoon. This is a report that will be shared and provided by both myself as well as our executive cabinet. And I'll start off. Could you please put that projection up? Thank you. For our public and our team members and special elders, the Melpitas Unified School District is one that in some respects, in many respects, is very unique. Because we are a community that greatly values being in the presence of one another so that we can support our learners as best we possible. As we have said for many years now, this is a culture of belief, and it is established on a foundation in Melpitas. In nineteen fifty-four, when the Sunny Hills neighborhood was created as the first in the nation to have a planned integrated neighborhood. Melpitas is a community that is such that we greatly value integration of ideas, new ways of doing things, and always on the move forward while still maintaining a great reverence for where we come from. And I share that because in this first photo, and also sitting here in the Roundtable Languages School, we see two examples of pathways that our learners can experience, the Melpitas High School extension, which is in the photo, as well as learning three languages, English, Mandarin, and Spanish here at the Roundtable Languages School. And why is that? Because our strategic goal number three around could you do the next slide please? Around building a pathway system for learners is key to where we go in the future and building a culture of belief where we do this together with our innovative ideas and our evolution of trying new strategies is the epitome of what it means to be trailblazers in innovation so that all of our learners who graduate from MUSC and move on to their careers are doing so in a way that makes them the designers and creators of the future. And it's with great, I want to say reverence, enthusiasm, and pride that I sit there before you and with you in reviewing the work that we've done together and the work we have ahead of us. Next slide, please. These are three of our graduates who because of the work that team members all along their educational pathway have done to provide them with these different experiences leads them to where they are now in their careers. We have Daniel Cody, who came to us, I think he came to us in ninth or tenth grade possibly, and he had not yet found his niche. And he went to Calvary Hills High School, where the world of leadership was opened up to him. And he became a student leader who was involved in their LCAC development. He was on their PTSA. And he also came to the board now and then to provide reports. Who has also given up Jay to do an internship at View, which is one of our local companies in HR. And his entrepreneurial spirit keeps him connected to Calvary Hills. Last year during our career day, he shared with our learners there his different endeavors that he's done, including creating a clothing line and dabbling in real estate, a starway in the bar. In the middle, we have Chloe Wang. Chloe Wang has been with MUSC her entire educational career. She shared with me at one point that she did not see herself ever being interested in something like robotics and engineering because her family was encouraging her to do other things like medicine perhaps. But in the ninth grade, she checked out this little group called the Robotics Club. And the robotics club when she was in the ninth grade had only twelve members, and she was the only female. And she determined, A, there need to be more females in this club, and B, the club needed to be so much bigger. So by the time she graduated from Melpitas High School and as the president of the Robotics Club, she and her team grew it to over one hundred members with a large proportion of them being female, and they looked to building a pipeline from the middle schools and ultimately the elementary schools. She's still too staying connected with MUSC. She was back from the digital resources academy and serves students and also talks with them about internships such as she had at Microsoft in the software engineering. And then we have Nyla Chit. Nyla continues to be a leader across the nation where she is a junior at Spelman College. She's created her own nonprofit called My Roots Are Rich. She's spoken in many different venues about the power of knowing where you come from and sharing that all learners see themselves. She's received awards from McDonald's as an innovator. And she's also been in a new name where she was an intern in finance and investment. And she too comes back to Melpitas to speak on behalf of others and also to me. And I also want to remind us all, for those of us who were there and for those who weren't, that in twenty twenty, after George Floyd was killed, Nyla, who I think was a junior at the time, organized over a thousand Melpitas residents and nearby community members in a march for Black Lives. So Melpitas Unified has a history. We have a record of providing our learners with a community of experiences and also we can point to their experiences and to places like this that we're sitting at, how we are leading strategic goal number five of ensuring that we're building healthy learning environments where all of our learners can find their place. Next one, please. One of those opportunities that we provide to our learners is our middle college high school. And that is located at the San Jose Evergreen Community College District Extension located on Sola Parkway, where a learner can experience their educational path from TK all the way beyond high school and into adulthood with our partnership that we have with that district and through the dual enrollment courses that we have. And also through middle college high school. And I want to just make sure that our community is aware of how important this other pathway is to our learners because we have some learners who just don't have a place. They don't feel like they can, that schooling matters, and they don't know their why. But when they find these places that we have created for them, they get excited, and I want them to tell us themselves. So Scott, would you please click on the just click anywhere on the picture and go to the video. You have to play that in the skip as soon as that is played.
Did you want to?
No, I want to play the right it's, okay. I know I've been a two of my, please. There you go. I know you can't hear really well, but I can't be sure of getting it. Walking it super extended to start class.
Having a tighter community means that you just simply have a better experience. I felt like going to school, I mean, I feel like driving going to school, like I enjoy going to school now.
The exciting part of Melpitas Middle College High School is that
We have a new, new system, so just for education. And not be able to get out of bed, not be able to go to school, so getting out every day. Walking with a super extended start class.
Having a tighter community means that you just simply have a better experience. I felt like going to school, I mean, I feel like driving going to school, like I enjoy going to school now.
The exciting part of Melpitas Middle College High School is that students and staff are double communication. So if they look so much importantly focused and they can access corporate learning, they'll take a proprietary investment risk, found those same topics. If this sounds like something for you, do try it.
There is something you have heard so. More than that, right?
There's another one?
Yes, I'm not right now. Thank you. So you were able to hear from that clip about how the learners found a connection to learning, and they now see themselves as successful and able to make a way for themselves in the world as they find their career. Next slide, please. Our next set of slides provides some context. Data wise, we're diversified, and we're going to have assistance from a senior from our nations named James Sheridan Partners.
Melpitas Unified School District encompasses nineteen schools with a model of educational excellence and innovation, serving a diverse population of ten thousand seven hundred students. Among them, two thousand twenty-five of English learners and three thousand five hundred and fifty-three come from low income households. Yet, through relentless dedication, we ensure every student has an opportunity to succeed. Our team of one thousand four hundred and seven committed professionals, including five hundred and very many exceptional teachers supported by six district support teams work tirelessly to empower students to achieve their fullest potential. The results of this commitment are clear. With seven California-based schools, Melpitas Unified continues to raise the bar in educational achievement. Rancho Melpitas Middle School stands as a beacon of national recognition as a blue ribbon school. While Melpitas Unified School District remains ranked among the top high schools in the nation by the US News and Roman Report, consistently earning its distinction for the past five years. And currently places a hundred and seventy out of one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven California high schools. Calvary Hills High School has earned the prestigious title of Model Continuation School for two consecutive years. And our elementary and middle schools rank in the top thirty percent of schools nationwide. Our district's excellence does not add academics. Rancho Melpitas Middle Schools Vincent Tran earned the RAP Tech Teacher of the Year award. For his forward thinking and technology education, Central Elementary School was named the finalist for the distinguished Golden Bell Award underscoring its groundbreaking project in its learning portal that continues to set the standard. Melpitas students, they sell hard beyond the classroom, gain recognition in athletics, arts, speech, debates, science, math, and more. Unlocal, national, and even global students. But their impact isn't limited to athletics. Our students contribute meaningfully to community, inclusion, and service in simplifying the values of compassion and responsibility. With nineteen schools dedicated to fostering a culture of learning, leadership, and innovation, Melpitas Unified School District continues to remind what public education can achieve. The district is more than just a place of learning. It's where we cheer leaders, creators, and changelings are shaped. And what excellence is not just expected, but achieved.
Thank you. And our next group of slides, our Chief Business Officer, Director Mendoza, will talk with us about our bond ratings.
Our MUSC Innovation Campus. Now that we completed phase two, we are moving to phase three. Currently, we are in the design process. And our MHS theater is estimated to be completed by fall of twenty twenty-five. So we could expect more rate of cuttings on phase three and then just, you know. Our two thousand eighteen general obligation bond series were all issued that we all received the money, both for two thousand eighteen Series A, I'm sorry, two thousand nine, two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Series, in May two thousand nineteen, Series B is September twenty twenty-one, and Series C in November twenty twenty-three. Two thousand twelve Measure E still has an outstanding debt of one hundred sixty-four million, and its final maturity date is August twenty thirty-seven. Two thousand eighteen Measure AA still has an outstanding debt of two hundred thirty-five million with a final maturity date on August twenty forty-six. That's very far away. Right now, our general obligation bond credit rating to Moody's is double eight-one. This is one of the highest ratings we can get for credit ratings because Moody's rating provides additional strength for general obligation bonds. Due to the dedicated special revenues, such as property taxes, we're using property taxes to repay them. Also, having this rating helps us get a much lower interest rate when we're going out for either selling the bond or repaying it. Next slide, please. At USD, we put a lot of effort in getting grants. As you can see, we generated about a hundred, close to one hundred and ten million in grants alone since two thousand sixteen. And this is outside the typical finance grants and principal allocation or funding allocation from the state. These are the grants that we actually have to apply critically, and we have to write the grants and the plans. And since two thousand sixteen, we have generated about a hundred and ten million. Our projected revenue in twenty twenty-five is close to one hundred sixty-seven million. Sorry, one hundred sixty-nine million. And our projected expenditure for twenty twenty-five is one hundred seventy million. Just looking at our revenue and projection, it is very evident that we have a deficit structure. And this is something that we've been, we're working on addressing and see how we can come up into a balanced budget. Next slide, please. During the budget development, we estimated that we're going to have twenty-six million projected end income balance on our reserve. And sixteen million, sixteen thousand five hundred eighty-five is our estimated funding per student, per ADA. When the revenue is calculated, it's based on ADA grants of weight that the governor come up with by using the local control funding formula. And the sixteen thousand is the average because each weight level and weight span has different dollar amounts, so we're coming up with the average. For twenty twenty-five, we are projecting a daily average, our ADA average daily attendance, nine thousand eight hundred six. But this is based on our funded ADA. For twenty twenty-five, we are still at the three-year average when we plug in all the numbers in the LCA. The calculator is, we're still qualified in applying the three-year average. What that means is that our ADA is more than nine thousand eight hundred six, but we are getting the funding based on the three-year average rather than the much lower ADA. So this is something that we're going to have to connive for the out years because the possibility that we go out of the three-year average and we actually have to use our overall ADA will be lower than nine thousand eight hundred. That means we will have lesser dollars also. Next slide, please. You've still missed an audit and actuals report last week at our regular board meeting that you accepted. Our, I want to focus our attention to the third column from the left where it says unaudited, actual unrestricted. This is the reason why I want to focus on here because this is where we are deficit spending on the, on our budget. We are getting less revenue than our actual expenditures. And we have to borrow money from our reserve funds to have a balanced budget. What we close the books in twenty-three, twenty-four, we end up borrowing about six point three million to balance our budget in the unrestricted funds. The next column is the restricted. These are legally restricted funds that we, that is set for specific purpose. I have shown you previously all our legally restricted funds. And these are pretty much set aside for a plan that we have in the next two to three years to spend down. And some of them are ongoing and some of them are one-time grants. And on the top, you can see our, the funded ADA that we use, that we end up having in unaudited actuals is nine thousand seven hundred seventy-two ADA. Our projected in adoption is nine thousand eight hundred six. We are looking at about more, less than a quarter of an increase in ADA when we're projecting our revenue to be on the conservative side. And we adjusted as first interim and second interim comes into picture, we have a better idea of how our ADA would look like. So we prefer to have our ADA on the more conservative side. And I want to emphasize that one percent increase in our ADA could easily mean about one point five million addition to our revenue in the LCA. Next slide, please. In the past five years since COVID, we have been getting some one-time funds or a couple of years with funds, grants from the state, all are COVID dollars. We used approximately close to forty-five million over the span of five years. And this has been depleted already as of the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. Or I'd rather say we have six thousand dollars left in twenty-four, twenty-five to spend. All of these funds have been spent. And you can see on the top of the slide that we spent most of our COVID money related to paraprofessionals, the nurse, health workers, mental health counselors. That alone is a total of two point six million per year or for the total of the COVID dollars that we received. So these positions are, that supported our student in terms of mental health.
Thank you.
Any questions, your member?
Thank you. And going back to our average daily attendance and we came at one of projected over one hundred ninety-eight hundred.
I just want to remind our board and we think that we established two big ambitious variable goals. And last year was the first, which we'll continue this year, which is to increase our average attendance by ninety seven percent. And prior to COVID, it was at ninety, just almost ninety five percent. With the twenty three, twenty four school year, we were able to increase that by almost a half a percent. And every one percent of ADA brings in about one point six million dollars. So because our average daily attendance went up by a half a percent last year, this means it will be an additional of approximately six hundred thousand dollars. So with that, to lead into the next slide. And Executive Director of Inclusive Services for All, Randy Dorebinus will take us through some of our challenges.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Yes, as you look at this slide here, you'll see, and as such by Superintendent Jordan, we do have two big areas of goals and tenets we wanted to. We have attendance as a major goal for last year, continues to be a major goal this year. Uh, not only is it hugely important for our budget, but more importantly, it's hugely important for our students' learning. Every time students are not in class and they are not learning, they are missing information and learning goes in the wrong direction. So it's really important that our students are here so that they can take in the learning that is happening from at school. And so as part of that, we're looking at the chronic absenteeism rate. And when you look at this, you can see by the numbers here that we make our September twenty two, twenty three school year, Superintendent Jordan, shared we went up a half a percent. And however, when you look at the data, you'll see that some of our staff groups are not there as well as other staff groups. So we look at our English learners at fourteen one, fourteen point one percent. And our learners in all associated economic councils of fourteen percent, fourteen point seven percent, they are missing school. And if you look more closely at our learners of African ancestry at twenty four point six, our learners of Latin ancestry at twenty one point four, as well as our learners who provide social education services at twenty one point four percent. Those are big numbers. That's a lot of time lost in school. And as we, we think about how we support, we support all students, but specifically these sufferers, I will share that our site, our focus very closely on students and their families. But trying to figure out what those barriers are for students getting to school. In addition, the district has several initiatives and leaders and staff that are working on having supports to get our students to school and bridging those barriers, resolving those barriers, or improving, improving those barriers. Um, that includes some of the targeted work that we are doing for our, and that's the next student who have African ancestry. In addition, different to the system is more that we are working on to get that to care. And that particular awareness focused on students with disability and one of those unique barriers that are impacting their learning, um, how they are gonna be able to get to school. Attendance members, it gets for students, it gets for our lucky. And it's not a good transition to the next slide, but we're gonna even focus on three areas that I will correspond here.
Um, this is a very slight, I'm only because we are, uh, we're capital for the thing we get. So I would see what percentage of kids are clearly different side of the, of the event and all, the education happens especially.
Yes, so our McKinney Vento students are often in one of the other categories as well.
Thank you for filling that in while I switch microphones typically. They also are sometimes in um, other areas as well. They may be students with disabilities. They may also be students who are English learners. Um, but as Superintendent Jordan shared, they are often followed into that newer category. Uh, we don't have, well, we have a number of students who are McKinney Vento. And for our line, it's McKinney Vento or students who are unhoused. Um, and so those students, um, uh, they, transportation is often the largest barrier. And we mitigated that with transportation options leveraging our own busing services as well as some outside vehicles when needed.
Excuse me, um, McKinney Vento, unhoused, are you referring to they don't have a permanent address? Or they're homeless? Could you please clarify what that means if you refer to you saying all the McKinney Vento students are homeless? Or they don't have a permanent address?
Thank you for clarifying for seeking that clarification. It's actually more than just they're unhoused. It also means that they may be doubled up in another, or they may be in a hotel or they may be living in a condition where that's not their permanent residence, but they are leveraging somebody that they know or families that are what they call doubled up, where multiple families are in a, in a specific location. So thank you for clarifying and for giving me the opportunity to clarify, I should say.
Right, um, next slide. We're transitioning to three K areas here, um, and. There we go. So looking at health and wellbeing, um, so as we think about this particular slide, um, I am gonna highlight from the net go here, the Center for Disease Control or the CDC data share that forty percent of our students are sad, depressed, or stressed. We in Milpitas are having students who are sad, depressed, and stressed as well. Um, this is gathered across the entire nation, but we're not an exception to having our students with these struggles. And the work of our, our mental health professionals, our counselors, psychologists, our health clerks, our nurses, all those folks are helping to support not just the physical wellbeing, but the mental health and wellbeing for our students. The work that they do here in our district supports students' ability to be here at school physically and ability to access their education. So by increasing their wellbeing, we are also decreasing their chronic absenteeism or their inability to be at school. Um, we desire to find the means to help these students to be in school. And sometimes some of our students are here, but they need additional support that might be provided by a mental health clinician or a school counselor or a psychologist who's supporting the student's mental health needs. They're in I P P. Um, all of these are mental health professionals that provide these additional supports for students. Even our wellness centers have folks in them that are supporting kids being at school and having them be in, uh, in the classroom and be able to, be in a place where they are able to learn. Um, so when you think about that's the most higher, you have to be fed, you have to feel safe, you have to feel you're in a place where you can learn. And, and that is sometimes the need that is fulfilled by some of these positions that are here. So, um, I also want to highlight that the health clerks are also making those connections with their families and supporting kids who have illnesses and helping families with getting kids back to school after they have illnesses. So again, all of these positions allow us to have kids be in school, be physically well, and mentally well. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Director Johari. Johari?
So can we coordinate the communication in the slides so that, um, I think I'm struggling a little bit. Can we coordinate between the speaker and the slides? I have to be careful. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, so to the one executive director Dorebinus, to continue to establish solutions in our program, we also need to increase our support awareness for AI. AI is rapidly evolving and the work, the work that we've effectively successfully integrated into our school system is moving forward. There is a need for ongoing professional development for both our instructional and non- instructional teachers. Question for Brad Woodweather, how does AI impact our workshops, whether it be in business services or learning development? How can teachers leverage AI to support with their own instructional planning and communication with students and families? Uh, in addition, but in particular, how would we integrate AI into our classrooms to better meet the needs of our students, specifically our English learner and special education students? And finally, how do we ensure that all students have comfort with AI technology so that they are ready for the future? These are just a few of the leading priorities that we are working to strategize around. In addition, we need to continue to revise and elevate our curriculum so that students are getting access to AI at university. This is something that's essential for all of us as well as learning about AI itself, um, so that they are prepared for new careers. Next slide please. And we also need to sustain and increase our student, um, student engagement. Robust, robust athletic programs are, we're looking to sustain them and elevate them. We have, sorry, we have a robust athletic program. We need to support our teachers with professional development regarding physical education. After school activities, increase student engagement and move us from engagement to higher levels of belongingness. In school and after school athletic programming provide valuable learning opportunities, not just for athletics themselves, collaboration, leadership, and our foundational to developing healthy, mental health, and healthy habits. It's one of the first things that we can do to continue to support mental health and belongingness. So, Adam, what do you want to say?
Thank you, Executive Directors. We're reviewing the areas that our one time funds supported after COVID and that we are looking to find additional funding so that we can continue to support at the levels that we are. And, I think that's pretty, uh, next slide. Thank you. In the next slide, we see spelled out exactly what a personal tax, when you queue a fund of three eighty two million dollars annually, that is a hundred and nineteen million dollars per course of tax. In addition to recurring, um, three four dollar course of tax, and even with the two of those in the bank, the condition provides personal tax revenue is still at the bottom of the chart of those who wish to have course of taxes incentive right now. So, whereas Measure Q will fund mental health, health clerks, and healthcare professionals as well as counselors. They will provide ongoing professional development to retain our exceptional educators, particularly um, looking at how we can ensure that our educators are equipped with the knowledge, skills, and technology so that they can integrate AI strategies in their instruction as well as in their work. We know that without having this embedded in our daily lives during school, that our W S T members are missing out on the opportunity to enhance and improve work production so we can focus more on other human aspects of leadership, working, and teaching. And our learners will be behind others who have access to these strategies through their educational career. And remembering the data point that Executive Director Johari pointed out around just in San Claro County alum in San Jose, that proportion of jobs that require direct knowledge of AI that were there in the first quarter of twenty twenty four is much greater than the estimation and this creating of the tax, our ability for people to have a place to live because of the number of residents and jobs being out of bounds in our values. So again, going back to our first strategic goal, we want to assure that our learners have all the ability and strategic goal number three, that all of our learners have the experiences that they need in order to carve out their pathways to a career. And we want to ensure that our technology classes that are elected to continue. Uh, you might remember that in February or so at our middle school, the tech collective was on that was being considered not to be in place for this school year because of lack of funding, however, with the ability of principal crews and Executive Director Johari to look at all of the different funding sources that do exist, they're able to patch together enough funding to support it for this year. So Measure Q would provide funding so that we don't have to patch together funding for things such as the tech lab. And also, as was pointed out, athletics and wellbeing support are also areas that we heard from our team members and our community members last spring, that they wanted to have funding for because it is not enough in order to continue to sustain the athletics that are offered at our schools, particularly the high school one. Next slide please. In the location of five, we create the opportunity to be right. We have an example of that with our adult nurse and our adult teacher. And to the left, it's one of our counselors, our lead counselor who's been in the district for quite some time. Where she was honored while in Rotary Club or for great work a few years ago. It's a reminder that our counselors are in Title II as we pursue strategic goal number three, strategic goal number five, and strategic goal number one. Next slide please. And here, just a reminder that shaping the future means that we have to continually evolve with what is happening around us in our economy, in industry, and in our environment. And that we thank our leaders and our classified employees association as well as our local teachers association for the support that they make in ensuring that all of our team members have what they need so that it can be their best for our readers. And if you click on that link there, we have a video which shares with us the Milpitas High School extension, which is a program that is the result of work of a team of about twenty people in the course of two years. The Innovation Campus is an opportunity for students to learn, to grow. It's an opportunity where students will get to collaborate with each other, be part of the industry officials can take that hazard and apply it to the program.
As a district, we realize that our students have changed in an exponential way and start to adjust how. So I know and I believe that the Innovation Campus here is N E C's answer to that. We have to make sure that the business system, that there's a, one plus one means two more. Speed of implementation, let's move, let's see what we can do with technology.
Speed of implementation, let's move, let's see what we can do for technology.